I'm sorry.
All right.
I'm. Go ahead. We'll call a meeting to order. In terms of roll call, I see we have councilors Scott McPhee, Scott Cowan, Dave Harms, and John Sullivan, and myself, Jim Lepina, Mayor. We also have Kim, our reporter, Kevin, our manager, and Janelle, our assistant manager engineer onboard. So, Kim, we're all here for terms of our roll call. In terms of the process tonight, we're gonna take it, try to take it kind of slow, and by the numbers, we could get complex. Kevin's already talking about the muting process. Everybody's muted right now except for council. As we go through this process and council is discussing an item, I'll try to leave it, will leave everybody unmuted unless it gets cumbersome, then we may ask that we mute everybody and use the raise hand option on the lower right of the participant menu. In terms of residents, I see we have people on both on video and on phone with us tonight. There will be a number of opportunities for you to participate. First of all, we have the normal public comment period in the first half of the meeting, and then at the end of the meeting, we have another public comment opportunity. Also, we have a couple of motions on the agenda and a new business that will invite public comment on as well before we actually make the vote. So, for that public comment, we will utilize and take input from those on the visual process first, and on your participant screen, if you click on participant in your lower right, you'll see who's on, and in the lower left-hand quadrant of that menu, there's a raised hand. You click on that when you want to speak, and we'll call upon you. Once we get through the visual or the video portion of public comment, then we'll open up to those on the phone. At that point, Janelle will unmute everybody on the phone, and each of you can raise and try to speak upfront, and Janelle will capture your name and phone number, from which we will then call upon you individually to go ahead and speak. Sounds a bit cumbersome. I don't think we're gonna have a lot of people on phones. It shouldn't be that difficult. One more thing I want to do, start doing from now on going forward, is slow down the voting process a bit. Every time we make a motion and prepare to vote on that motion, I'm gonna ask Kim to repeat the motion back to us so we know we have something in print that reflects what we're trying to accomplish. So, we've had some missteps, just because I think we pushed some leads too quickly in the past, and we'll try to slow it down and make sure we do that and get it right. Any questions from the council on the process? Am I okay?
Yeah.
All right. With that in mind, I don't know if any changes or additions to the agenda, does anybody have any out there? If not, let's move to the consent agenda where we have three sets of minutes and the finance reports. On those minutes, two have been changed since the initial issue of the minutes. December 1 has been updated to obtain the correct legal language necessary to go through the closing process on the sale of our property. That should be straightforward. Hopefully, we can just zip right through it. If you have questions, we need to pull that from the consent agenda. Similarly, for the March meeting minutes, there was a last-minute change brought on identified by Scott McPhee that was sent to us within the last hour or so. If you have concerns about that, we should pull it from the consent agenda. So, with those two caveats, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda or pull items off if you see fit.
Motion that we accept the consent agenda as shown.
Second.
A motion from Scott Cowan, a second from Scott McPhee to approve the consent agenda as shown. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to guest presentations, Lieutenant Fun Fountain, are you out there? Lynn County Sheriff's Office?
We're not seeing them on yet. I'm texting them right now, just to see if they're having problems, but Chief Wooton with Albany Fire is here, so if you want to move to that item first.
Okay. Chief Wooton, are you here? You are here. Can we, what's your report, please?
Absolutely. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
I think I just unmuted myself. Well, first off, good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. And let me go ahead and go through, well, first off, you all should have the quarterly report in front of you that was in your packet, and then there's a few slides that we'll go over, and then I have a couple of comments to make after the slides, and then I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
So, first off, Janelle, did you want to go to the first slide? All right. So, just to kind of summarize what you have in front of you, that over the last quarter, you can see that the call volume in Millersburg is, you're starting to kind of see where the average is, that around, you know, 25 times a month, we're going on to some sort of response within the city of Millersburg. Go to the next slide. Again, similar to, you know, we're starting now to kind of see the trends. Lift assists are a, you know, the number one call that we're going to in Millersburg, and I had spoken to you the last time I was in front of you about that, that there's some folks in your community that are needing some help from us, and, you know, we're happy and we're glad we're able to help them. Other incidents, sick persons, I'm not sure if I told you this last time, but that's, you know, when people aren't feeling well, certainly this time of year, a sick person call, you know, in the city itself and in Millersburg, we're seeing quite a few more of those. Knock on wood so far, most have not been coronavirus-related, but nonetheless, this is also flu season, so we're going on a fair number of those calls as well. We can go ahead and go to the next slide, and feel free to ask questions as we go. So, the overall response time for the city of Millersburg was 7 minutes 41 seconds. So, again, we're starting to kind of see where things are landing now that we've been delivering service to you for a while, and as chief, I'm tracking as closely as I can. That's, you know, 7 minutes 41 seconds, again, that's the time from that, you know, one of your constituents picks up the phone and dials 911 to the time that somebody is showing up at your, at that person's home. And that includes emergency and non-emergency calls. So, even some of those lift assists that might not be emergent, and the crew isn't using lights and sirens, it includes all those calls as well. And then, Janelle, was that the last slide I gave you? Yep. Okay. So, a couple other things I'd like to just throw out, but there's not a slide. One, over the last six weeks, since we've been responding as a department to the coronavirus and making sure our emergency providers are safe and have the right PPE and are doing the right things, we have been working closely with Kevin and Janelle, and I'd say we've probably been talking once a week, once every two weeks, just coordinating, making sure that the city of Millersburg has whatever you need and are getting, and, you know, you're feeling served by our department. Along those lines, with the quarantine, on Friday, and forgive me, Kevin and Janelle, if you were gonna talk about this, I hope I'm not taking any thunder, but on Friday, we plan on doing a porch parade through the city of Millersburg. We've done that in some different neighborhoods in Albany, and what that is, is basically we'll partner with the Lynn County Sheriff's Office. They'll bring like the SWAT rig and a bunch of cop cars. We'll have some fire trucks and ambulances out there, and we just drive the neighborhoods with our lights on, honking at kids. What we've seen is just an abundance of people coming out of their homes, and kids waving, us honking our horns at them, and kind of breaks up the monotony for those that are quarantined or who have chosen to stay at home. So, it's kind of a fun thing. It's an easy way for us to maybe try to lift some spirits, and honestly, it's also good for the police officers and firefighters going around and kind of remembering why we got into, one of the reasons why we got into this, and that's engaging in the community. Because with the coronavirus, we kind of have had to minimize doing that a bunch to, you know, to prevent any sort of risk of exposure to our people. So, this is a nice, safe way we can do that, and we'll be doing that through the city of Millersburg on Friday. So, if you're not working on Friday and you plan on sleeping in, be careful, because there probably could be some sirens going off in town.
Do you know what part of the day you'll be doing that?
Let me look at my calendar real quick, and I can tell you.
I believe it's 10 o'clock, and we will be posting stuff on Nextdoor on our website, and we'll also put a message on the reader board.
That is totally awesome.
We're just waiting for the announcements from Sandy.
Totally awesome. Phenomenal. That's good to hear. Shane, I have, Chief, I have a question for you, and I discussed this, I brought it up last time, the 40 folks who needed assistance to be lifted, it concerns me a lot, not about the cost, but about the people who need the help. Could you, you may not know this, I'd be curious to know, do we have 40 people who were lifted one time, or 10 people lifted four times, or?
No, I don't have that exact number in front of me.
No, I wouldn't expect it to.
But I can tell you, you do have one person, that is probably the overwhelming majority of those responses.
What I'm looking for, what I'm looking for, I would welcome feedback at some point, if there's anything that we as a city could be doing that we're not aware of, that we could possibly be doing, be helping these people. And I have no idea what that might be, but if anybody has any insight into how we could help, I would like to hear about it.
Mayor, what I can do is, we have a community paramedic that goes and visits this person on a regular basis to check in. If you'd like, I could have her reach out to the individual and just let them know that the Millersburg City Council is thinking about him, and if there's something that the city can do to help, I, we definitely could convey that if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, please do.
Okay. Consider it done.
Were you finished, Shane?
Yes, unless anybody has any questions.
Questions for him? Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your help. I'm glad you're there. Kevin, have you heard from Brandon?
He is having problems connecting, I think he sent Janelle an email, she's sending him some information, so hopefully we'll get him on here in a minute.
Okay. In case you forget it, I heard yesterday that Brian, Ryan Keys, who most of us know, Deputy Ryan Keys, was promoted yesterday to sergeant, which is nice. I mean, it's nice he's been recognized for the work he's doing, so he's pretty happy about that, obviously. Okay, so we think Brandon might come back later.
We are hopeful. Scott, you should be unmuted. You should be able to unmute yourself or account.
Yes. Council, if you're muted now, you're muting yourself, right?
Yes, it should be.
All right.
They've had trouble unmuting, actually, so.
Okay.
Let's see if he's, Scott's not, doesn't look like Scott's able to unmute.
Let me try.
Janelle's gonna try to unmute you.
Okay. They're all having trouble getting.
It says that you were muted by the host, or muted by the host.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder if.
Scott got unmuted.
All right.
I bet. That when we moved out of the sharing.
Oh, that probably did it.
So, I think we're learning something here. I think we moved from sharing the screen so that each of you would come up, and I think that may have done it, but you should, see if you're unmuted now. Can each of you unmute?
I'm unmuted.
I'm good.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yep. Scott McPhee.
I don't see Scott McPhee.
There we go. There we go. All right.
Scott, did you have a question, Scott McPhee?
I know, I'm good.
Okay.
Scott Cowan did, I believe.
I just, I just wanted to check in, there's a map of the, of the bout that Chief Wooton was speaking to with that porch parade that we should probably, if you don't have it, we can post that.
We have the map. I sent a message back to Sandy asking, because they're going, it started on Clearwater, and I don't think their sheriff is aware that Clearwater goes through now, and see if there's a way to catch those, if, knowing that, if they would want to try catching some of those subdivisions to the west.
Yeah.
So, we're waiting to hear back from them.
Okay.
I have, I have one question, actually. I bring this up every quarter, but the ambulance service, where are we at on that?
We are still in the process. We've got to talk with the county, and it's just been put on hold with all the coronavirus stuff, but we've got the stuff ready to go. We're still getting documentation from Albany on the number of times that it's occurring that Jefferson's not available.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Brandon should be on now, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Brendan?
Brandon is on.
Okay. Brandon, can you hear me?
I can.
Hey, awesome. Thanks for being here.
Sure.
Why don't you go ahead and walk us through the report and see if we got any questions?
Okay. Sounds good. So, this month, you will see that we had another increase in hours, traffic citations, there was a bunch of traffic made, eight citations, 15 warnings, one crash out there, three people arrested, and one of those included that ATF arrest that I mentioned briefly last month. They had a drug bust out there, and then overall complaints and investigations or incidents, 127. And 180, just under what that was last month, so another increase in hours. And there's been a couple thefts. I think I mentioned it last time, a lot of it's related to vehicle stuff, more catalytic converters that were stolen, and we've seen an increase just in the count, really, in tools being stolen from vehicles, some of the work vans that have been targeted are being broken.
Is anybody, is anybody talking to the contractors about the problems of locking stuff up? We used to do that a year or two ago.
Yeah, and a couple of them that went out and started just going through the houses too when they could, the ones that aren't all secure, and also notifying neighbors that were leaving garage doors open in other little areas that weren't secure, just knocking on the door, making contact with them, try to clean some of it up.
Good. Thank you. Any questions from council for, for Brandon? All right. I told the council before you came on that Ryan Keys got promoted yesterday. We're glad to hear that.
He did, yeah. He's actually gonna lead the porch parade too, Friday.
Oh, easy. Awesome.
Yeah.
Good. Okay.
Is there, I might have caught just the tip end of something, where you guys talking about wanting to add something in the route?
Kevin, you were talking about that.
Yeah, Brandon, I had, Sandy had sent the route out today, and I just had mentioned that with Clearwater going through now to Sweetwater, it allows, even though, I know there's a lot of construction, so it may not work, but I was thinking if it was doable, if they would want to look at maybe adding some of the newer subdivisions, a lot of kids in that area over on the west, Tuscan in that area.
I'll look at that tomorrow, and if I need to, I'll resend it out to Sandy.
You might want to have, get Brian, get Ryan or someone to comment on it. There is a lot of construction vehicles in there and stuff, but they should be providing emergency access anyway through there, but, you know, you just don't really know if they're pouring concrete or something.
Right. Okay.
That could be one of the disadvantages.
We'll take a look.
Were you all done? Any questions for Brandon? If not.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Thank you. Pretty good, you work in your car.
Yeah.
All right. We'll see ya.
See ya.
All right. Moving on to public comment, I see we have two or three people on with video. If any of you would like to speak, please hit the raise hand logo on the lower left side of the participant page. It's a good time to get in here. I don't see anybody doing that. Janelle, you want to, we have, I believe, one outside phone, or is that you, Kevin?
That's Janelle and I.
Okay. So, I don't see any phones coming in. Is that why you're seeing it also?
Correct.
All right. So, let's move on from public comment, then we can, we have more time at the end of the meeting, we do it there. Council member and staff comments. My favorite topic, and that is the business directory. We talked about this in March, and we talked about the approval of the webpage project, and we, as a council, pulled back on not including the directory, which was a $600 adder. I think there was some discussion, maybe concern about manpower required to manage it, and I think there might have been some philosophical differences about the benefits that are doing that. I'm asking that we reconsider it, given what's been going on this past month, but also as I look more closely at the package available to us for the webpage. This is simply an opportunity for businesses to get on the map on our webpage, give their location and their phone numbers, and on the back page, we can get the names and the emails of the key contacts for our benefit. If we do that, it does a number of things. One, it takes away my need to even talk anymore about a business license. This is the reason we were talking about business license, was to obtain this information. It provides a tool for staff which they want. So, rather than reiterate everything I've already said, which you have seen from me in the past, I'm, again, I'm asking that we reconsider this, I'd like to provide it for staff, and I guess I'm open for comment at this point from the rest of you guys.
Yeah, Jim, I read your email, and I support your plight.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd echo what John just said, as well as if this is a tool that the staff could use and needs, I think the cost definitely is worth doing that. We have talked about that, you know, trying to find out what's in our community, and if it's just those simple things of just phone number, name, and an email, it's really not, it seems fairly manageable at that point. And we could always look at this in a few years and see if it's working or, you know, not, but I support it. I think it's worthwhile, and that's definitely, definitely if the staff is feeling the need, and also it's not going to be cumbersome for them to use and time-consuming.
I've had a number of discussions with Kevin over the last month about the value of this. I've also talked to Kim about the process for implementing it and maintaining it and so forth, and she has minimal concern whatsoever. In fact, the initial entry can be, should be done by the businesses themselves, and then Kim reviews it, approves it, and posts it. So, we don't see a lot of, really, a whole lot of time involved. It won't happen overnight. It could take a year or more to get it totally done, but I think it's the right way to go. Dave and Scott McPhee, comments?
Yeah, I'm good with it. It's, I think it's one of the things we're all, it'll get implemented, and we'll find out how successful it'll be by the voluntary, you know.
Okay. Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I know, I actually second Dave on that, I think, and also Cowan, as far as, you know, let's definitely look at it in a year or two and see how much use and benefit from it that we're getting, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you. I don't think we need a motion, this is, it's within Kevin's preview in terms of his budget funding management and so forth. It's a tool that he can just go do. I just want to make sure that, I was hoping to get his support, we all support it. Kevin, do you think we need a motion for this?
I don't know. Let's force these. I think it's a small enough amount, and we just didn't want to do it since we had asked counsel's opinion on that previously, and.
Right.
There's no need for a motion on it, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much, council. I appreciate it a lot, so.
Me too.
Okay. All right. So, let's move forward and then into city manager's report. I assume that's Janelle.
Yeah, that's Janelle and I. So, I will start off, a couple of things that I just want to point out, it's in the packet, we discussed it in the information that went out, but I want to just point out that one of the main reasons, I want to thank council for supporting the changes with inclusions we had last year in our budget with regards to high-speed fiber here in the city hall and our phone upgrade. Because of those things, we're able to do what we're doing tonight and have this meeting. I would hate to see how we would have done this prior to this being done. We flat didn't have the capabilities to do a meeting like this this time a year ago. So, thank you for your willingness to support that last year during the budget process, and I think we're seeing it pay big dividends.
To quote somebody else I know, it's a team effort.
All right. It is, but we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the policymakers.
That's right.
So, thank you for that.
All right.
A couple of things, I just wanted to talk with you about, we contacted each of the councilors separately, and one of the things that you directed us a lot of to do is we went out with our current payments that just went out, we made available a deferral of water and sewer payments for this, for those, those that just came out in early April, or for businesses as well, or residents, any of those who may have difficulty paying their bill in full, and, or if they want to look at a payment plan if they didn't want to defer, we made that option. So, that went out, the notice went out, Matt, there's posted on the website regarding to it. At this point, we've had one request of deferral, so it hasn't been a big, now I'm not sure that, I think most everyone probably received their bills last week. So, councilors, you, those of you, you probably noticed on the bill that there was also a link to that on there. That is a program that we put out. We also mentioned that council would review that if things continue on it. I don't know how long we're gonna be in the current state. I don't know if any of you saw, the governors did a press release today and a, and conference, teleconference online, talking about the main points on reopening the state and a number of things that they want to see take place, along with some of the things in the, between Oregon, Washington, California. So, depending on how those things go, as far as looking at the ability to be testing and having equipment ready and following, so there's not a lot of specifics in that yet, so it's pretty, pretty open. I would imagine that over the next couple of weeks, they'll have more. I don't think it's going to be an immediate reopening, it'll be a delayed, they'll be watching areas and things, but it'll be at least through the end of the month and possibly maybe end of May, but we're keeping an eye on that. I'm gonna let Janelle talk about the wetland delineation.
Just a second. Scott Cowan, it looks like we got another join with your name on it, and it was causing feedback, so I muted it. I'm trying, I'm muting now?
Yeah, hang on.
You're fired.
I feel like I'm on some rave. DJ Scott Cowan?
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened there. Scott, we've got you on here twice now. I'm not sure if that was intentional.
He's still showing too.
Yes. I can't unmute it. Already unmuted. Okay.
Hey, there now? Yeah, I'm here. Are you there? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we've got you showing up as connected twice.
Yeah, I just disconnected from a different, a different connection there, so it should be good now.
Okay. It sounds like, it sounds okay, so, okay. You can go on then.
Okay. Sorry about that. I was having difficulty with my other device, so, but I switched to a device.
Okay. All right, you can mute or unmute yourself then, if needed.
Okay.
All right. So, next thing on the, this is the city property wetland delineation. So, I've been talking for some time about the property, the city-owned industrial property south of city hall here, and then also the, on the west side of the railroad tracks, getting a completed wetland delineation done. If you may recall, work has been done in the past to delineate wetlands on these properties, but it's all out of date now, and the Department of State lands requires a delineation from within the last five years. So, anticipating some. As you may recall, work has been done in the past to delineate wetlands on these properties, but it's all out of date now and the Department of State lands requires a delineation from, within the last five years. So anticipating some future work, at least the fire station that we'll be talking about later tonight, part of this, we've moved forward with the wetland delineation. The work will be performed by Jacobs, which was formerly CH2M Hill, and the scope of this work falls under the current OnCall Engineering Services contract, so we were able to just amend that to include this. And the reason for doing that is they have done previous delineations on this property and the person who's doing the work was the person who did the work then, so they've got past experience that will make this look more efficient. So they will be out beginning later this week, actually, to do the fieldwork associated with that. Wanted to give you an update. Are there any questions on that? I'll go on to water and sewer rates, just wanted to let you know, we're on a path to present the proposed water and sewer rates. We put that on hold just because of everything going on right now, largely because we want to make sure that there is, the public outreach can take place in the way that council wants that to happen. We had an open house planned, which we can't hold right now. So at this point, we've just put everything on hold, we will, we will continue to work on, put the schedule on hold. We're going to finish finalizing the rate structures and making sure that's all documented so that we don't lose any of it that's been done to date. We plan on having a new timeline and bring that to you in the near future, once we have a better idea of how we want to move forward with that. Then, system development charges. So we have kept with our proposed schedule for system development charges. On March 11th, notice was sent to interested parties, which would be builders, developers, home builders. Now, it's posted, the notice was posted on the city website, not, this timeline is all laid out by the state statute, it's a requirement. April 10th, last Friday, we posted the methodology to the website, and this is a draft methodology, and it's available by reference at city hall, again, to meet that 60-day deadline prior to the hearing that we have scheduled coming up. You, council, haven't had a chance to see any of this yet unless you've gone to the website and looked at it, so we will be providing more information and we probably normally do a work session to talk through it, so we will figure out a way to have some conversation around that. But this at the moment is what is proposed in the new, the SDC methodology means, it has, there's a document that tells us how we came up with these numbers, but these numbers are also in there, the actual SDCs. The numbers that you see in red here are different from what was provided in the table in the council packet. So I just wanted to highlight that when we put the packet out, we weren't quite finalized and we found a few other little things. So this is what's in the draft, it's posted on the website. You know, transportation is quite a bit higher, water goes down a little bit, sewer goes up, we have stormwater now, and parks has not been done yet, so it's just staying the same. And you can see a comparison to other communities. Those communities, we can compare to pretty much any other community you want to, we just selected these as some of the local ones that we had data on at the moment. I believe Albany would normally be increasing theirs by CPI right now. Don't know if they're on track to still do that right about this time of year, so that would bring theirs up a little bit too. So are there any questions on this without going into the actual details of the methodology, which we'll do in a few seconds?
Just a comment, Janelle. I did go to the webpage and look at the data. I now have a better understanding why it's taken Jenny so long. I'm joking, I know she's listening.
Well, Jenny's been a great help, Deb, her consultant's actually been, so it's been all, both of them have worked a lot on it.
I invite the council to go look at this on the webpage and just get a flavor of how much data is being collected behind the scenes to get to these numbers. It's totally mind-blowing. It's a lot of stuff there.
So one thing, just I can point out right now, these are the max, maximum based on the work that went into it that we feel that we can justify charging. You don't have to adopt the maximum. So if there's a reason you feel that one is, or any of them are not where you want them, you think they should be, there is the ability to adopt something different. It also makes sense sometimes to look at the project list and perhaps remove a project that may be changing the numbers if you don't think the project is appropriate, but we've done it, spent a lot of time talking through those things.
Janelle, when do you think we'll get the parks, parks one done?
The parks one can be started as soon as we adopt the master plan, which...
Good night!
So, but I guess my big, my big question would be, as we're moving forward with this, is where we're going to, before we actually adopted these fees, is where the parks is going to, going to lay out basically, what, what ranges? So I'd hate to have that come in significantly higher and then we may look at the total cost and go, well, you know, we're just, we're starting to get up there. So I definitely, like I said, before the June, we at least have a, have a framework for where that's going to, going to be, so.
Okay, yeah, I can talk with Deb about what she would see the timeline is for coming up with a draft on the parks so we could compare, even though we won't be able to be on the same schedule because of the notice periods required, we might be able to have a ballpark idea of the number before we get there. And we don't know, that parks number may go up, it may go down, so I understand what you're asking.
Yeah, because as I started looking at those costs there, and obviously I'm looking at Albany, I'm surprised Albany's that low. It'd be interesting if you pulled their connection fees in, how much they're charging there, though. So, just saying. You know, they were higher than them, so it starts concerning me as we start tacking on even more like they are, so.
So, and when you look at the methodology, it will, it'll tell you why we may have different numbers than Albany. I get what you're saying, because you kind of want to look at where you fall relative to other communities, but there are specific reasons why some community might have a higher one than others, and it has to do with projects that are proposed. And I forgot what else I was going to say.
No, 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 that makes, that makes absolute, absolute sense. There's also, as, you know, as a builder, we look at the overall costs and, you know, the more we increase our costs over another city, it's cheaper to build, build there. So last thing we want to do is, I don't think 15 compared to 12, I know their connection fees there are really high, there's some other fees that they like to charge there, so I'm not talking about it there, but, you know, again, as you start, well, you look at Filomith at 26,000, I know there's some cities up in the Portland area that is high as 75,000 in SDC. So, so, yeah.
We can provide, there's a whole long spreadsheet of this comparison that Jenny's actually put together in the past. It's maybe a year or two out of date now, but it shows you a bunch of those types of cities and where we fall. We're really in the low end still.
Oh yeah, no, definitely. And I don't, I don't think we really need to look outside of that, of those areas. I mean, maybe Corvallis, I think Filomith is just, that's too far out, because anybody who, any developer looking at our, at building there is going to be looking at, you know, possibly building in Albany, well, maybe I'll go to Millersburg or Jefferson, maybe South Salem, questionable, but, you know, nobody's going to look on a map and say, hey, I want to necessarily build here versus the rest of the state, so.
I think it might be a little bit relative to the median value of a home, right? I'm looking at that going, the price of a house, median house, value of a house here in Millersburg is going to be a lot more than Albany.
Yeah, I was going to, Dave, I was going to point that same thing out. I think if you look, you know, our median home price is up in the upper 300s, close to 400,000, and I think Albany is in the mid 2s. So when you look at a percentage of the cost, you know, when you look at it from that standpoint, and we do have larger lots, so I think you can expect to see your, so that's the other thing to keep in mind, with our 10,000 square foot lots versus the smaller lots that the other communities allow, you will see most likely those costs up a little bit higher because of that, because you don't have as many lots, as much of a coverage as far as lots.
And, and the number, you divide the total cost number by the total number of future anticipated units, which would be homes, you know, for the residential side of things, so that makes a big difference.
So when you look at that and you stop and think that we're looking at 10,000 square foot lots versus an average of 6,500, that's a pretty good cost savings. You know, when you look at it from that standpoint, that's a pretty good value.
Well, both that and the value of the home make it relative, right?
Yes.
And that makes sense. And also when you go to some other cities, on their connection fee side of it, they start charging per square foot, per bedroom, per bathroom, so there's some other, so there's some other fees over on the other, the other side too, that we aren't looking at at all, total into it, so, yeah.
Well, as far as, there are a lot of different names for these charges that sound similar, so connection charges, which we've gone through pretty recently with you guys, is the same as Albany's, but that's one thing in the methodology, if you want to spend some time looking at it, there are different ways of charging these for sewer, you can charge it based on plumbing. Or you can charge it based on a typical single-family home, which I believe is how ours is set up, for residential, then commercial and industrial have other factors. So take a look at it and ahead of time would be great, before we talk about it next, that way. Also, if there's other information that would be helpful to you besides what you said here, let me know and we'll get that information so we can have that comparison.
We're getting close.
Okay. Do I go on? Are you, do you want to move on? Okay. Okay, one more quick update. While playground areas are close to the public, we've had all protection material installed. Here's some photos, if you haven't been around the parks recently, so just wanted to give you an update on that, but we were going to budget for it for next fiscal year, but when we got estimates, the cost came in low enough that we were able to just include it under our current materials and supplies budget.
Nice. Good job on that, thank you.
That's great.
Looks good.
It looks fuller than I'm ever used to seeing it.
It is fuller than it's been in a very long time.
There hasn't been any kids there to kick it all out.
Yeah, right.
And if you see that picture with the swings, there are stall mats that go underneath those, they just weren't put back down yet at the time this picture was taken.
Looks good. Okay, anything else from Janelle or Kevin? Are you still going?
If there's any questions on this, which most people may not be able to read, but...
I think based upon our discussions tonight, we can take off the line either dealing with a business permit, or license or whatever.
Okay. Get the point.
Okay. Is that it for staff report then? Manager report? Okay, Forrest, do you have anything? Forrest, our attorney, do you have anything to talk about on the, on the agenda? You're muted.
You're still muted, Forrest.
He says no, I can, I can see his face, okay.
So, okay, now, no, I thought, isn't that fun? You guys have the ability to mute an attorney.
Well, the nice thing is you're not sitting on my left poking me like you used to do.
That's right. No, I have nothing to say, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, then.
Hey, Jim, I think Scott Cowan's having some technical difficulties, so I'm not sure if he's on here yet, but...
He's, he's been on and off a number of times, he's currently off, so...
Yeah, he sent me a text here, said he was kicked off or something, he was dropping, so.
Janelle, you want to call him or what?
He's texting me right now, he says he's trying to get back on.
Okay.
I'll tell him we're going to wait a minute.
Okay, we'll wait for it for a second, a minute. While we're waiting on Scott, I'll move Mike, comment up from the closing comment. I would really like very much to thank staff, our staff, for what they have been going through for this last month. They've done an awesome job. I've told them twice now at least, that I've got it easier than most any mayor in this state because of the work that they are doing. I'm coasting over here. Basically, they've got the brunt of the work and it's going really well. Kim be doing an awesome job with communication on Nextdoor and on the webpage. I know that's a team effort behind the scenes, but I think, you know, this community hopefully is getting used to using our webpage and Nextdoor as the primary mode of communication. Hundreds of people I know are on there, and I think it's working, so, and I think, Kim, you've done an awesome job on both the webpage and Nextdoor, so thank you so much. Can you hear yet? No, so I don't have...
He is not back yet. I will just make, while we're waiting for him, I'll just mention one other thing. We have, there he is, we'll give him a second, but you may notice, we do have a representative from LS Network who's been working with us, they have been great to work with, they're our provider for our phones and stuff, and actually one of their leads who has been helping us is actually monitoring tonight and listening, listening in, and wanted to be here in case we had any issues. So Kevin, thank you for, I know you're, you're listening, for being there, and we appreciate what you've done to help us get stuff set up and help us answer questions and stuff as we've been going through all of this the last couple of weeks.
Kevin, since we've gone off script here a little bit, I think Scott's back.
Yeah, sorry about that, my wifi is really bad.
No problem, I'm off script right now, I'm going to ask Kevin, I'm going to put him on the spot. Would you think it's appropriate to share with the group what you told me about this FEMA contact that you have, what they said about our webpage?
Oh, I have a neighbor that's with FEMA, and I, we were, I was out taking my dog for a walk here a couple of weeks ago, and we were discussing some stuff, he's up at the state, he's part of, in the state's area, so I asked him to take a look at our website if he had a chance, and just let me know if there's anything that he saw that we can improve on or anything that he would recommend. His comment back to me was, he's not aware of any city our size and well as larger cities that are providing the information that he is seeing on ours, you know, other than, you know, cities like Albany and stuff, but definitely no cities of Millersburg's size on it, was quite impressed with it, so.
Good. Well, thank you again to staff for already been doing this month. All right, Scott's back. This is going, to my knowledge, there is no unfinished business, nothing on the agenda. We've got the new business, first item is a fire station, architectural services contract award, so that all the data is in your packet. Kevin, you want to kind of walk us through this?
Yeah, Janelle and I will both, so Janelle will be, be coming in on this, but as we mentioned previously, we have gone through architectural services. We selected, as I mentioned to you, myself, Janelle, Scott, Chief Wooten, and Scott Cowan, Chief Wooten, and Jeff Woodward met. We had, I think, was it nine or 10 that we received? Nine, I believe, yeah, nine designed, proposals from nine design firms. We selected four firms for review, Soderstrom, McKenzie Jacobs, and CH2M Hill, and Ankrum Musayan. And we're selecting for interviews, and off of that, staff met and reviewed, selected Soderstrom as the preferred architect. We subsequently met with them and reviewed the scope with Soderstrom, who has developed the design services cost proposal, the fee for construction of the station, pro scope. So one of the things when we went out initially, we were looking at going to a CMGC type of bidding, exploring that. After talking with the architects and with Soderstrom, we decided to set on a traditional design bid build model, and with that, we did quite a bit of change into our scope to tighten it up. So based on the information we received from the design firms, the trending costs associated with fire stations in the state was approximately, this past year was about $350, $400 a square foot, which was up quite a bit from what we had budgeted and were figuring previously when we were first looking at the numbers, we were told to figure around 300. So kind of put it in context when stations 13 and 14 were built back in, about 20 years ago. For Albany, I was involved with that, and I believe that we were figuring right about $100 a square foot. The budget that we have right now for the station is what, is approximately what it cost to build a station 13 and 14 in 1988, if I remember correctly, so it's been a little over 20 years ago now. So we're recommending proposing increasing our construction budget for the station by about 800,000 for the 8,500 and 9,000 square foot building. And as we mentioned, given our current climate, we've also determined that traditional bid delivery approach will be our best and most cost-effective, and with that, and with the decision to utilize traditional bid rather than a construction manager, general contractor, the CMGC, what the city architect felt it would be prudent to include additional items and supplemental services in the design scope to ensure we have a very comprehensive set of bid documents that maintain our costs and minimize potential for change orders. So that does shift some of our costs from the design phase and, and construction cost estimates will also be needed during that same phase. So additional items, where some geotechnical work initially, we were looking at doing that separately, Janelle had some quotes for that, but the quote that we got through Soderstrom for their sub was lower. lower, so we elected to put that in. On there, Janelle can talk about that in a minute. And then we also need to look at about $42,000 of the design costs on that. So you'll see we're asking, what we're asking for, for budget impact, open budget for all the design services, about $414,000, consisting of $385,000 base with $8,000 in supplemental services and $21,000 in reimbursable expenses. Reimbursable expenses would be travel, for them to come down and do inspection services. We see some other things that we'll include in our budget when we get to it, or others for outs for our inspection services. And that would be through with Jeff, who does that sort of stuff for us now on our subdivisions, Jeff Woodward. And then we're also, which is about $105,000 over what the current 310 that we budgeted for in this year. And we can address that during the budget process for next year's budget. So we'll probably spend about $100,000. If this is awarded tonight, we probably would have about $100,000 come out tonight. I mean, this year's budget for the architectural services as they start. And then, like I said, we will also be looking at increasing budgets. So Janelle, do you want to add anything in there?
Not really. I mean, I put some specifics on the slide as far as, and it's also in your staff report. If you have any questions on specific items, you can certainly talk about that. The street utility infrastructure, $30,000 is shown here. We'd actually be taking out of the street and water and sewer funds for their components. And we may find that we need to do some additional work. Actually, we're pretty sure we will need to. That is not really part of the fire station project, but because of the proximity to where we anticipate having a future road, it would make more sense to put a portion of that road in now. So that'll be coming back during budget time, but now that, some of that is, work is in this scope as well. Yeah, here's kind of a breakdown of the total, if you look at their proposal, is about $414,390. They see $8,000 supplemental services, which those were all items that we want to pull from construction into design. And then the $21,000 in reimbursable expenses. This is all the time in materials contract though, so they have to spend it in order to get paid. That's all I've got unless you have questions.
The one thing I would mention in discussion with the architects, with the current climate and what we're seeing right now, even though we're going to budget for it, even though we're seeing, they were seeing higher numbers coming in, we feel there's a good chance that we'll see very, we could see some very favorable numbers by the time we get ready to go out to bid. If this continues, that there may be more options. So we may see those numbers come down compared to what they were a year ago.
Kevin, the total cost of the project, engineering and construction, is it safe to say would be spanned over three fiscal years?
Close, yeah. Of course, mostly one and a half. So the remainder of this year, we'll have a small amount this year. Design, mostly next year, and most of the construction will take place in '21, '22 most likely. Well, maybe not.
They've actually put together a pretty aggressive schedule. And for this project, that might be fine. We'll see if we can actually move through it as quickly as they are aiming to do, just with the challenges we have right now with getting the feedback we need from people. But that would have a starting construction in the winter or spring. We'd probably push it back to spring.
Bring it, bring the earliest. Of next year.
Of next year.
Yeah.
So, okay, so it'd be this fiscal year, in the following two fiscal years, to spread the entire cost over?
Yes.
So what's your comfort level in managing those expenditures with our budgetary process based upon what you know now?
Well, what we know now, I don't expect to see, you know, looking at where we are and with our growth. So what we have been figuring, looking at our carryover and stuff that we have, I think we're still in good shape. We actually, our beginning fund balance was $800,000 over this year when we had the audit and what we projected in the budget. So that pretty much covers the additional construction costs, if you want to look at it that way. On there, I don't see, I don't, you know, not having a crystal ball, I don't think, and if the economy comes back with what they're saying, I don't think we're going to see much impact on our tax taxes. We do expect to see, just because, you know, we're seeing property that, large portions that aren't, which we've already been counting on, that we'll likely see a slowdown in construction. So as far as what we're going in, but we have been basing our tax revenue increase based on much lower than what we're seeing. Where we've been figuring the last few years at 4%, with an increase with a 93%, if I remember correctly, collection rate. And we're well, we're above that both. This last year, we're at 9.6% increase in our growth. Most of our industries that are impacted by our franchise fees that we are aware of are still operating. And so I don't expect to see a big impact on it. So I don't see right now a huge impact in our revenue, other than what we were already planning and expecting to see.
Thank you. Are you ready for questions from the council?
Yes.
Council, questions regarding the proposal? What we're looking for tonight is approval of the contract for Kevin to sign a contract for the engineering.
And Mayor, just to chime in, you'll see at the bottom, Kevin has written down the recommended motion. So if, this is helpful to look at.
I see a, I see a one-liner in here. It says council motion to approve city manager entering into attached design service agreement with Soderstrom Architectural.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's in, that's on page two of the packet.
So moved.
Well, rather, so we're needing to adopt a new, I know I've let you get away with this in the past, but now we're needing to make sure that we eliminate this so moved. And you can just read verbatim if you want, if that's what you feel is appropriate. You can read verbatim that motion that is, the recommended motion. Sorry, Council Cowan.
Yeah, that's all right. I just saw a good opportunity there, but I would, I'm ready, but I want to make sure the other council members are ready to vote on it.
The one, the one thing I would mention, Mayor, that we do have is, we will have an opportunity, you know, once we get the design done, we'll have an opportunity to reevaluate. If we see things are not, you know, if something's changed, nothing says that we have to go out to bid immediately once the design is complete. If we see a need or there's any concern, we can hold off on going out. So we have it, we have another step before we would get to bid.
I'm actually not nervous. I just want to make sure you are.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. So you're saying 300 to 400,000? Or 300 to 400, sorry, per square foot to build it? Is it what they're estimating?
Yes, based on what they saw bids come in. So, and that was pretty consistent from all the architects that had built new stations this past year, what they were seeing. Now, we think that the 400 is high. Because some of those were in the metro area, Portland metro area, but you know, there was one that was finished in this area and one that's gone out to bid just recently in Medford, that are mid, mid 300s. So I think, I think Medford just came in, I think it was about 370, $770 a square foot, if I remember correctly.
Do you know what the downtown station cost, the, is it Station 11?
Chief Wooten can probably tell us. I don't know if they broke out both the, if they broke out the fire station and police station or not.
All right.
Shane, do you know, chief, and you're still on, do you remember?
I am. I don't have that number off the top of my head. It seems like the whole, the bond was for 18 million. And, you know, we owned some of the property. Counselor, I don't have that exact number for you, at least to throw it out as fact. So I can get that for you though, if you'd like.
I'm just curious. Visually, there's a difference between stations, right? So you just kind of wonder what, at what price point do you get what for the money, right?
Right.
Well, yeah, the, I think what you have to keep in mind is these are essential service buildings. So there's a lot of things that go into a fire station you wouldn't see into another structure. You're also looking at these, wanting, making plans for them to operate 50 to 100 years. So trying to take those things into consideration. And one of the things that we've talked about is, you know, we can come in lower, but it's a pay me now or pay me later type of scenario. So you want to make sure the systems that you're putting in, that you're designing and putting in systems that will meet the, the nature of it and the operational type of things that you have. So, you know, just overhead doors, for an example, take a beating. So trying to meet energy stuff. And so there's just a lot of things that you don't realize that go in. You have to have air exhaust systems in the base to remove diesel particulate and to maintain your, your air quality and stuff for, and so there's just a lot of, a lot of things you don't see go in in a normal facility that raise those, those costs on the fire station.
Hey Kevin, this is Scott. What we're entering into is just a, the starting point to really identify the cost in the sense of, we, we will have influence on potentially adjusting that later as we move forward, correct?
Yeah, and we will be getting cost estimates. Janelle helped me here, but I think at 50%
We'll get a...
Initial design.
We'll actually get an initial cost, what do they call it, opinion from the architect early on at the preliminary design phase. And then we'll get one at 30% design from a cost estimate, construction cost estimating company, and then also just before we go out to bid for the final. So we'll have a couple of milestones along the way where we get detailed estimates and we'll certainly be evaluating at those points.
You know, this, Counselor Sullivan, you know, what would really help is to put together a total budget of what we think we're going to spend and then work off of the declining balance sheet. So we can watch the numbers decline. You know, I'm okay, I'm okay with the Sanders, Sodders from architects, but it would sure help the group to have all of that kind of built in right out of the, right up front, I think. Are you familiar with the declining balance? Did you hear me?
We essentially, yes. So essentially what we have, when we have looked at the, the numbers, so the number that we have that we're looking at, that 400,000, that includes furnishings. We have some furnishings already that we've purchased that will go in on it. So, you know, when we look at where we are budgeting, and you'll see that when we come out, once we get ready to go to bid with the final documents, you see something very similar to it. It's not called that, but you'll see something similar to it.
Okay.
So question, so as they go through the architectural design phase, kind of how does that work? Are they going to bring us like three D's, designs kind of picked from these and then we'll kind of move it down to what you guys want? Or when do they get input from council and public on that?
Yeah, so we talked through how that process would all work with them. And if you, it's sort of in the scope, but it was also part of just the discussion. So early on, the first phase will be the programming phase where they're going to work with us on having us, getting the information from us, you know, how many rooms, how many, what's the floor space going to be used for? What are the needs? And then they are going to come up with some concepts that they're going to give to us. And we, it's up to, up to all of you really, how you want to go through selecting the architectural concept and what it looks like and how much, maybe public involvement or, or that sort of thing you want to have. But we've kind of, we've scoped for kind of a basic level of that, anticipating that the, the direction would likely be, you want, you want to have some options to evaluate and you want to have some public input, but we're not going to spend a year going through a public process helping select what the exterior will look like.
Well, I think there's some costs, some cost constraints, obviously, in that too.
There are, and...
Exactly, yeah.
And built into the contract are abilities to have additional meetings and additional renderings above their base, although I think their base rendering that they'll provide to us will be plenty for, for what we need. So we have those options in there.
Do they have a number? Sorry.
What was that?
Is that like three, three different renderings? Or did they even talk about a number that we're, that we're going to, going to get?
We were talking about that range, you know, a handful of different options. And we didn't, we didn't, in the scope, we didn't list out the exact number of renderings and everything. Because as we talked about it, those things really come out of the design and they're not, it's a lot different than it used to be, maybe five, 10 years ago, as far as, as how those pictures are generated. And they're not a large, new amount of work on top of the work they're already doing in general. So if, if there's a need to do something much above and beyond the scope that we have worked out with them, we will, we can add that in for some additional costs. But at this point, we feel like we've scoped kind of a, an average amount of time and effort for those things.
Perfect.
So, so one of the things, for an example, that we will see in the programming, that we had a discussion with the sheriff's office here recently, we, we asked, because one of the things we had thought about doing is moving the sheriff's office to the fire station. So we were talking about it, we mentioned, and they kind of said, is that a done deal? And I said, well, no. Would you prefer to stay in City Hall? So they actually did a survey of the deputies. The deputies actually would prefer to stay in City Hall. They said they enjoy having the interaction. And from our standpoint, I think it's probably better because they make us aware of things that they see in the community that we need to address from a land use standpoint on it. And they're also here then if we, we have. And we've had a couple, we actually had an incident occur in our parking lot one day where someone came in and said that someone jumped in his vehicle. And we actually had, one of the deputies was off duty here, was in the back. And he actually spoke Ukrainian and the guy that was there spoke. So it was interesting. The guy that ended up going to jail was a guy that reported the incident, so...
As fire chief, I'm hurt that they don't want to work with us.
They said they'd still like to come by and have coffee with you once in a while, but they'd rather have the main office here.
Good. All right, we'll do coffee.
You could put a basketball hoop in between and then have battles.
Yeah, I think those things are gone. There's too many workers' comp claims and things like that. No basketball. Lots of coffee.
No contact. It's not contact sport.
Or soccer.
Does pose a problem for us in terms of future office space. I doubt, well, I don't know for sure. But, you know, the new manager down the road, Janelle, with another engineer or somebody replacing her in her current role, might not want to show the office the way you two do.
We actually have a plan for that. We can expand two offices underneath the current roof structures here. So we have a plan that if we need to, we can do that.
Okay, all right. So the, are we ready for a motion? Do we have any questions? I haven't heard anybody raise any concerns per se that we would consider to avoid us making a motion for approval? Am I missing something? So Janelle has the motion half up on your screen. Can't get the whole thing. If you go to the second page of your packet, it's there toward the bottom under recommendation, if you want to read it off. But anybody have that in front of them?
Yeah, I think I do. A motion to approve the city manager entering into the attached design service agreement with Soderstrom Architecture.
Could I make one clarification, please? This, we want to take out the attached because it's not actually attached to the minutes. So just a design, the design services agreement.
Can I just amend that to strike attached?
Good catch, Kim.
Second.
Another second?
Second.
That's Scott? Okay.
Yep, yeah.
Kim, can you read it back for me, please?
Motion to approve the city manager to enter into the design services agreement with Soderstrom Architecture.
Thank you much. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carried. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on now to the parks master plan, something we reviewed during a three extensive work session. The minutes, the updated minutes that Scott changed later today, I think captured pretty well. Janelle or Kevin, do you want to kind of open the discussion up?
Yeah, I can just do, I mean, what's on the slide here is a quick recap, which I think most everyone's aware. I just wrote it for anyone who wasn't with the history. So in fall of 2018, this parks master plan was begun. The draft plan was presented, presented to council at the work session in February. And then at the last council meeting in March, the trails were reviewed. So council comments were incorporated into the parks master plan. So council comments were incorporated into the Parks Master Plan. Now, there were also council comments that would apply to the TSP, and those were noted, but what we're doing tonight is only about the Parks Master Plan, so any comments on the TSP will be addressed separately. So now we're presenting this plan for adoption, and as we discussed earlier, once this is adopted, then we can start on that, a Parks SDC evaluation. The other thing that that happens is the projects from this plan are getting pulled into the capital improvements plan and budget for this year, so it would be timely to adopt the master plan now so that those other documents that are coming up will be all in alignment with the master plan. And I don't have the resolution number, um, we'll need Kim to tell us what that is.
Twenty twenty oh four.
Okay.
Okay, um, comments from council?
Yeah, the only thing I have, um, and Janelle and I had extensive conversations and Kevin too about this, um, was the, going back to the uh, trail map there with the trail that goes down um, the future possible Zolki Avenue, just because we want to, you know, this this trail map we have in there, we want it to look and co- coincide with our TSP plan, and my my concern there is by showing a trail there, if we pull that over to the TSP, um, yeah, we would show a trail and a road also. Um, the problem with that is, is I think for our conversations, is the council kind of really wants one or the other. We want, if we get rid of Zolki, we want the concept that we could put a trail in. Um, and and that concept's there. The problem is, is if they're both on the TSP and you look at in the TSTSP what the right of ways are that you need, they don't co- coincide, and it basically make, it makes it so we would take more right of right of way than we actually need for a road. So now if we want to do a road and a shared use path, then we're, then we're gold, but we don't want to do both. So unless that's what council wants, I don't think it is what we, what what we actually want. Now, my concern is the TSP to me needs to be a document that we could give to anybody out there, a developer from Portland, from Corvallis, somebody who's never worked in the city, and we should be able to give that to them, and they should be able to read it, and they should be able to know the 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 right of ways, the easements, and everything else that they that they need looking at that. By leaving this trail map in there, if they look at that document, don't talk to anyone else down at City City Hall, it would show that they need a greater right of right of way than they actually need. So I I say that we strike that from this just because of.
So can I just, real quick, because we went back and listened to the recording from the, to try to get, make sure that we captured that, and the minutes were updated to capture some of this, but what we heard from the last council meeting was council consensus to leave both the trail and the road right of way in, but in the TSP, add a note to that project that basically says that either one or the other will be constructed, both would not be required. And so that's why we moved forward with what we did on this figure. Um, if council wants to change that, you certainly can, but that's that's what we got, the council consensus um, was at the end of the March meeting.
Yeah, and and again, I would definitely pull back that we do uh, take that out. I mean, Zolki alone has had so much confusion um, over the years, and I think one of the biggest things that we've wanted to do as a city is go to black and white, no gray area, no nodes, or somebody knows, or somebody knows what we want to want to do. It should be black and white, and that's what the TSP is supposed to be, and it and it and it is, as long as we don't um, leave two things in there. Um, you know, can can confusion going back there is just the, um, you know, on 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 just Ed's subdivision, we we pulled thirty foot easement from him, so for a sixty foot road, well, if it's a local road, we only need fifty feet, right? So so there's just a lot of confusion with that, so I think we need to make this black and black and white, and by pulling that trail map, we're still going to get a fifty foot easement through there. So even if we decide later that we don't want to build Zolki, we want to build a trail, we still have fifty fifty feet, which is way more than we than we need.
Your suggestion is to remove the trail designation to that section of Zolki, which is from, where, what, how much of it?
Oh, from 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 woods up to where it comes into the current, that where Zolki's already already built. So all the way from woods, all the way um, east on it, so. Because it basically goes goes to where the where the road's built now, that's that's where it where it stops at, so.
So we did, we did listen to the tape that Janelle mentioned, and the council, you you did have uh, significant discussion on this, and the consensus from all of you, I believe, was to do it with, leave it as it was with just the note. That being said, I don't think it, Janelle and I don't see any reason that doing that creates any problems or or issues moving forward, um, but if council decide, wants to change that, um, that's fine too. We just, well, um, want to make sure that we capture the potential.
And and get clear direction on this Parks Master Plan so it can be finalized.
When would the note actually get applied to the TSP? What's the timing for that to occur?
So that, I was, at the end of the last meeting, I said I would find out the process for amending the TSP, and I haven't been able to do that yet. Um, I believe we could do that sort of amendment fairly quickly, um, if you want us to move it forward. I don't think this is years, I think we could probably get it done in the next couple of months, if that's important, to push forward.
I, my perspective is, we have a problem to resolve here, much bigger than this discussion around what we call the road or a trail. That is the future of the Zolki Lane. My own personal view of that has changed over the last few years, I don't know where everybody else is, but it's, that's a complex problem, needs to get resolved, and until it really does, we can, all this titles for roads versus trails may be for not. Do we really sit down and figure out what we're going to do with Zolki?
That's true, but but the issue here is, is is what I'm bringing up is that this, our hope is that this is, this trail map mimics the one in the TSTSP, right? We want them to be the same. Now, that means we have to go update the TSP, that's fine, you know, but we want them to be the same. Um, or my issue is, again, it it's not whether Zolki should be there or not, I believe that's a good conver conversation to have, and I think we need to have that, um, but that's a separate. This is definitely about being black and white, clarifications, you know, we can put notes in and stuff along those lines, but we really need to be black and white. If I take a road with a trail, my easement, my right of way is larger than we actually need, and I don't think that that is is what we're after. And again, I believe we should be able to take that TSP and hand it to any developer or anybody out there who has any idea what they're reading, but has never dealt with the city of 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 Millers Millersburg, to be able to read it, and they should be able to figure out which right of right of ways that they need, which which size easements. Um, and the reason behind that is, is so, so there's not confusion going going down that down the road. I don't see the reason in, I don't see the plus side in in leaving it in there, because I don't think we want to do both. I think we want to do one or the other. And again, if we have Zolki on there, we're already getting fifty foot of an of an easement, so why would we leave it?
So, if I could get in on that, um, so it's a fifty for the right of way, um, we're doing fifty foot, is that, did I hear that right, or sixty? The thirty and thirty, or?
A collector would be a sixty foot right of way, a local street would be, I think it's fifty-four or fifty-two actually right now, so we don't need the sixty foot, we need the fifty-four or two, whichever it is, um, because this isn't actually a collector. We, I think we had this discussion last week, or last month. Um, it doesn't need to be, we don't need another collector, we need connectivity and um, access for other properties, which is its main purpose, and if a developer were coming in and developing land with a subdivision, I don't think there's any doubt that they would have to put in the road. But the purpose of the trail being shown is not necessarily for the developer, it's for, if the city wanted to go ahead and put in um, some sort of connectivity for bike and ped or something out, because they knew the development wasn't going to come in, this would show an intent uh, to have some other connectivity there. So um, I understand why there might be some um, perception that we might require a path and a road of someone, which is, I think, why we were talking about adding the note to the TSP, but just showing the trail on the Parks Master Plan, I I believe the intent as as expressed in this document is, that is an idea for a potential future trail connection, doesn't mean that a developer would put it in instead of a road. I think the road is always the fallback, um, or in addition to the road. It's 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 a project the city could do if, um, or, you know, someone could do to provide something if a road wasn't going to be there. But again, if council decides they want it to just be gone, we can take it out, either way.
So Janelle, the TSP will show the the road, though, correct?
The TSP does show the road.
Right, the fifty-four or whatever, the right of way there.
It also shows a multi-use path through there. Again, with, the TSP shows both, and the way, I understand the intent of the TSP is it's one or the other, it's not both. But um, but I understand what Council McPhee is saying as far as the, if you, if you didn't read it that way, that you could come away with the understanding that the developer had to provide both, and that's not the intent, so we either need to clarify it or change it somehow.
And we were clarifying it with the note, was what council directed us to do.
In the TSP, which makes, that seems to be the spot, because that's where, to me, if you clarified in the TSP, that's where the the right of way will be indicated of the fifty-four. Clearly, if if we didn't, if we decide not to build a the road, then then we have a very large amount of right of way to just put a trail in at the future, once we decide we're not going to do the road. Um, correct?
Yes, um, correct, although I don't know that we would, yeah, that's that's correct. Um, I just also was going to point out that this is not the only project that is described this way in the TSP. I believe there are other projects where, there there are multiple projects in there, but then there are explanations of, well, if you did this project, then you wouldn't do the other project. Um, it's one or the other, not both.
Personally, I think I'm good with the the note being added in the TSP to indicate the, you know, the intention, but I I do, um, I sort of, I I do understand what um, Counselor McPhee is, you know, referencing, but I think the note should be adequate, in my mind.
If I recall, going back four years ago, whatever it was, we developed the TSP, the key initiative for a trail or access other was for the streets along Bain, we learned that area, to get from those streets over to the park. I remember that discussion numerous times, and the trail, of course, goes all the way to Woods, so it doesn't far more than what that issue was identified as. Um, anyway, those people felt like they were landlocked, it was hard for them to get to the park.
Would the note be like right after the requirement for the right of way? Like, if someone's reading the TSP, some some bill, some developer, is it like immediately right after this is the right of way required?
Well, first, I would say that um, I, although it should be clear in our documents, um, I don't think there's any developer who would proceed down a path of designing something around it without coming and talking with us first. We have a process in place for clarifying those things for them, but um, the, what I would envision in the TSP is in the project description of the this segment of path, it would in, it would explain in that description that this project would not be constructed when the other referencing the street project, S five or whatever number it is, is constructed. So I think we have some language like that in there already for times where we have um, sidewalks and bike lanes and and some things like that on some other roads, like maybe Old Salem or um, I forget now, because it's not in front of me, but that's where it would go, it would go in the project description, so when someone were to, I mean, the the TSP definitely takes some digging into for a developer to, um, I mean, they can take a quick glance at the map, but then you got to go read the project description to figure out what it's saying you need to build, so that's where you would find that information.
Okay, I mean, I'm with McPhee as far as, I I believe that something doesn't need to be very black and white to make it to where there is no individual perception on what it's saying, it just, it's it's explained well enough to where um, it is what it is. I think a note can be that, it just, it has to be able to be easily accessible too, right? You got to be able to find it.
Yeah, because I remember not too long ago, um, and and John, I think you you might be able to weigh in on this, because you were on planning commission at the time, probably better than we even can, but I remember not too long ago having a city council meeting because, um, you know, even the TSP showed Zolki, we ended up without Zolki in a sub sub D division, you know, um, and we had to pull that up. So I'm just saying, there's a lot of confusion around this road and that TSP and where right of ways are and where roads are, and who gets to make a decision whether it's a trail or it's a road. Um, I could see, again, confusion, and and to me, this thing, because of the issues we've had, it needs to be black and white, just, there it is, you know, simple, we're Zolki's going through, period, the end, right? And if the city council decides not to put Zolki through, that's our choice, um, and at that point, we get fifty fifty foot of foot of easement that planning commission has already got for us, thankfully, and we just, we just do it. So that's why I don't think this needs to be in there, so.
Yeah, I I I agree with with Counselor McPhee and harms, um, black and white is always good, especially when it comes to planning commission.
However, how do you do black and white when you haven't defined it yet? We haven't solved the problem, and until we do, we can't make it black or white. So with with the note in the STSB, with both of them shown there, at least indicates that, is until we fix the problem.
Well, you're 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 talking about Zolki, and that's a different conversation, just because we got to go update the streets map for that, which which we're not doing yet, and and when and if we go through that conversation again, which I do believe we need to do it, um, then then we could, we could relook at that, and if Zolki moves and we decide that we want a trail, hey, we're already updating the uh, road roadmap, it's no big deal to update the uh, you know, the trail map at that point too. So at this point, at least as as we're talking, Zolki is going through as far as the TSTSP shows. So and 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 that kind of needs to be our direction to planning commission and any developer coming in, is that Zolki's going through, period, the end. Um, there's, there's no possible trail, there's no nothing, it's 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 Zolki, because that's what we want today. And and again, when we want to change that, we can, we can do that, but direction needs to be, it needs to be clear, so, which is what this does.
If you don't.
Does that make sense? I don't know, right? I agree with you totally on Zolki, there's a whole conversations that need to have there, and it seems like every time we have it, we're kind of rushed, because there's a development going in, and we always talk about it at that point, we talk about the whole whole thing, but that's a separate, so.
If you, if council doesn't see any need for a trail path, some sort of connectivity other than a road along this alignment at any point in the future, then there's no reason not to just take it out. Um, take it out of the Parks Master Plan now, um, and then, and take it out of the TSP and only show a road, that would be fine. This was, um, as we've talked about last month, this was one of the pieces that was in the TSP, so we brought it over and asked, do you want to um, continue it here, but it's.
Would that, would that road contain a bike lane?
The, no, a neighborhood street section does not have bike lanes, it has sidewalks and it has on-street parking.
The only challenge, the only thing you would have is if the council were to decide not to put Zolki through, now you no longer have any way for a connection. You'd have to go back in and and put that back in later.
Or or if you saw a section of Zolki that, you know, just looking at it, you felt was never, never, yeah, not in the next twenty years going to develop, and there, so a road wouldn't go through, um, you know, would you like to have the tool in the toolbox to be able to go put a trail in there to create that connectivity? If you don't see a need for that, then there's no reason to keep the trail.
Well, we can always add it, add it later, because what 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 you're talking about is us having a conversation about not having Zolki, this is a city, city council level, so we're having a city council discussion about not building Zolki even as it's on the TSP, and at that, at that point, we can make the decision to change it um, to a trail. My my point is, is this is a roadmap for planning commission, developers, and everybody else, saying, hey, get us fifty foot of of easement. If down the road, city council decides that we want to change that, that that's not the direction we want to go, we can change that, but we have them getting us fifty foot of foot of easement through that. So that's why I don't think that a tool needs to be there, because we can, really, a city council, we can kind of make that decision as we do it. Nobody else can build Zolki for us, you know, except for, I guess, developers coming in, but beyond that, you know, planning commission or whoever is not going to build it for us, so that that that. So that 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 conversation happens here, so with us.
Couldn't couldn't we go the other way with that is just approve it as is? And then once we decide on the T S P and and we decide if we want the road to go through, we could then come back and then change, change this this here with the 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 master plan and just be done with that? Couldn't we do that as well? I mean.
Yeah, what was said is is completely true. You can, you council can change this at any point in the future. So if you want to have the Parks Master Plan go through with the trail shown for right now and consider changing in the future, that's fine. Or if you want to take it off and consider adding it in the future, that's fine.
If we take it off.
Nothing is said in.
I'd say we leave it on and then when we have that conversation about Zolki, which I think we need to have, it then we we adjust if 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 we decide that, you know what, a road's not going to go all the way through. But at least we have the this showing, at least there's some intent for something to go through with the right of way with the trail. But I agree, we do definitely need to to discuss and figure out Zolki as it's been a hot topic multiple times in the past. But it's not to just be decided tonight. I think we just approve as is with the way it shows. At least we we know there's a the intention of something, some connectivity with at least at the minimum of a trail. At least that's what that's where I am. I mean, I understand, you know, I understand what you're saying, Scott. But I just don't see the the reason to, you know, change it. At least not at this point.
Well, I think the issue, the issue with it was was once we adopt this, this is going to be something that planning commission developers are going to get also. And then we wanted this trail map to be what's in the T S P also. So we don't have conflicting documents, right, out there, conflicting plans out there. So and you know, I mean, when we, my thought is, is when we have the conversation about getting rid of Zolki or not getting rid of Zolki, we can always go back and add the trail back later. But at least I'm getting 50 foot of easement for now because that's the maximum of 54. That's the maximum that I that I need. No matter what I wanted to want to do for the local streets, the maximum easement that I that I need right of right of way through there. So I don't need more, so as long as I'm getting that and I want to make that clear as day to everybody, planning commission, developers, everybody down the road, this is, this is what you're what you're getting. So I would say if you wanted to prove this, but not, but then we wouldn't take it to the T S P, which I think was kind of the plan. So they don't, they 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 don't look the same. I might, I might get on board with that, at least it's not on the T S T S P. But to me, they should be, they should really be the same living document, same plans. And we should update the T S P with this like our plan was, we'll take that out. Later, if when we have a big, long conversation about keeping Zolki or not, then we can always add the trail back. But during that period of time, I was getting my 54 feet of right of right of way. So I've got plenty of it. I'm I'm golden. Nobody's, nobody's taking that and taking that from me, basically, so. Because last thing I want to see is a subdivision come in in six in six months. And I know we got great people on staff, but you know, instead of giving us 54 feet of right of right of way, they looked at it and said, oh, no, it's a it's a trail. So I only need, I only need 20, you know? I mean, there's just confusion that that comes that comes with that, so.
Okay. I got a question. Go ahead, Janelle. You go, Janelle.
I would just say, if you want it to be consistent with the T S P right now and adopted documents is completely consistent, then you need to leave the trail in. And when we adjust the T S P, we we modify the Parks Master Plan at the same time to continue to keep them to match. Because right now the T S P shows both. So even if you take it out of the Parks Master Plan, it's still both ways in the T S P.
Yeah, but isn't our isn't our plan after this, wasn't our plan as of the city council work session was what we adopted here? Was what we wanted to go take over the T S T S P and update that?
We were looking for your feedback on these trails so that we would understand what you wanted in the T S P. But we aren't, we aren't necessarily, I mean, you're going to have to see the T S P again. We're not, there's a whole process involved in that, which Matt replied, reminded me in a message that is a comp plan amendment as well. So so if we want to stay as consistent as possible, you would leave the trail in the Parks Master Plan and then when the T S P is updated, we update the Parks Master Plan at the same time to take it out. The Parks Master Plan doesn't go through that comp plan amendment like the T S P does. So we can easily do that at the same time. If you want the documents to stay completely consistent.
Well, okay, that kind of changes it because I didn't think that's, I thought we were trying to update this and then we're going to update the T S P with it. Because this doesn't even as it's written, doesn't match the T S P, correct?
Oh, well, that, you mean for this particular element or for other?
Yeah, for this, no, 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 for for all of it, yeah, for other elements of it. I I believe, doesn't the T S P show a trail still that goes down to like Talking Water Gardens area? And I mean, it's, it doesn't match this at at all, right?
You're you're correct. It doesn't, and that was an intent to change that. But that was a clear direction from council, is the way I understood what you wanted there, so.
I think this is a clear direction, too, unless we get rid of Zolki. So so now we're going to have three different documents out there that are all showing something different, why a T S P in this, but three different maps? Because I'm showing Zolki, I'm showing a shared use path. Now I got another document with other paths on it that doesn't, doesn't match the rest of it. So so I say that we that we update this to what we think that we want, matching the T S P because we have Zolki. Then we can go and we can start looking at the T S P. And if we decide to pull Zolki, because we talked about it and then we get into conversations and ends up being we never pull it, then we'll add these back if that if that happens. It sounds like the T S P is a lot larger, larger document to to mess with, so.
I have a question for Janelle and Matt. I think Matt's online with us. Can we simply circle this item on the map, Zolki, and put a big old fat hole on it with a note indicating to be resolved at a future date? So it's pulled from the, actually pulled from the approved plan.
From the Parks Master Plan?
Yeah.
Well, I guess we could add, we could add writing in there that says we could not show it and add a paragraph that says a potential trail in the Zolki alignment is being evaluated and will be updated later. But I don't know that it gains us anything in the Parks Master Plan.
Well, it would give you consistency with the comprehensive plan. Sorry, this is Matt chiming in.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just saying that generally those two documents should be as consistent as possible. And if it's in the Parks Master Plan and it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, you can label it in the Parks Master Plan as such. And just say that this is a proposed or recommended change that should be made to the T S P as soon as the city can can do that, and then that's fine.
So maybe that would be a good just comment or note to put on multiple trail segments, that that's how we're approaching this and that could apply to Zolki as well.
I'm just trying to find a way to get consensus here, we'd get through it.
Well, so I mean, that that brings some interesting information out what Matt's bringing out. My thing is just get black and white and clear and all the documents should be the same. Because obviously, as we're talking through this, there's confusion because, you know, the T S P doesn't match, it does match. I mean, there's, there's a lot going on here. So I thought we were going to update it with this, but obviously that's a long process. There's some confusion there, which is fine. It's just, there's just a lot of, a lot of moving parts to this. So I either say we make it what we think we want the T S P to be, or we take Matt's side concept of it, which it sounds great to me, too. But then we got to come back and update this when we do the T S P, so we need to put that on our agenda to look at. We need to mark all the trails that we took off, which was a significant, you know, and so there's, there's quite a few on there.
So I want to apologize first because Janelle and I had discussion on this and we kept it in as it is. And we went back and we listened to the tape on the discussion because what we heard was with the note that everyone was good with it with with the note and that was going to take care of this issue. So that's why we brought it forward as it is right now on it. So I want to apologize for that because we thought we had consensus of all five at the last meeting when we were ending it. When the note came, when it came up to put the note until such time as we did the change to the T S P, so. So I think either way is is fine, but we we just need direction on where we're going to go with it.
I would like to find a way to get a motion approved with exception to the degree necessary to cover the the issue because we're holding up the S T C work and we've got the budget in front of us. We need this thing approved to move forward. So how do we do that such a way that we capture the issue so that it's resolved at a later date?
I I say we just, I mean, because, I mean, like I say, Matt brought up a lot of good points there of of there's other trails and T S P is going to take a little bit. And we got this much work. We we know from this map what we want. I think we captured that as a council, what we're really after here. And it sounds like we just need to go update the T S P later and have some convert conversations over roads. I would say that we just make a motion to adopt it, deleting the shared use path for Zolki at the point that we go back to the T S P. When we do update that, then we can talk about getting rid of Zolki and adding shared use passing. Either way, we're probably get, hopefully, we don't have to come back because if Zolki stays, we don't have to update this. If Zolki doesn't stay, we have to update this and the T S P and so forth. So that would be my my thoughts on it. I would, I would make that motion in a lot shorter sentence than that, so.
Well, it's not a motion. We have a fairly lengthy resolution in front of us that needs to be adopted to cover the 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 findings.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we adopt the Parker master, Parks Master Plan as written. There's a resolution number 2020 dash 04 with the subtraction or change of taking Zolki Lane shared use path off of the trails map.
Second.
Okay, is is that an acceptable approach, Kevin and Forrest?
Did you get that all captured, Kimberly?
I'm finishing it up right now.
Yeah.
I got a question while that's happening, Janelle. If we move forward with the doing this motion and indicate a road is what we want, but then at some point later decide that road's not going to go all the way through, specifically maybe Woods Avenue. It stops before it gets to Woods Avenue for connecting. Then I guess my question was that would we then we we'd basically be out of any option of going with a trail to connect to Woods Avenue, correct?
Well, you're never completely out of.
I mean, we would have to.
Always go back in later.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have a document showing an intent to do a trail connection there at this time.
Actually, and how about this question then is if if we indicate a road and we decide not to do the road and we took 54 feet, but we like, ah, we want to do a trail now. Can we do that?
Um, sure.
That's what we're doing now.
Yeah.
No, you're taking it off. You're taking the trail off.
No, no, we already have the road, though. See, that's that's my point. This this trail goes right where where Zolki Lanes goes on the T S P. So current currently, we're taking 54 feet.
All the way up to Woods?
All the way.
On the T S P?
Yes.
Yep.
You might mention that.
That confirmed, I don't have the T S P map in for me, so.
Yeah, we had that discussion, in fact, with the people who live there and it didn't go real well.
Okay, then that 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 satisfies me, thank you.
Kim, you want to read back the the motion, please?
I'm, I might have missed the exact lane last portion. So here's what I have. Motion to adopt the Parks Master Plan as written and resolution 2020 dash 04 with the subtraction of taking out the, this is where I kind of didn't get the whole thing, the Zolki Lane portion. Is that right, Scott?
Zolki shared use path.
Thank you.
Between Woods and how do you want to describe that current current Zolki built?
Janelle?
Sorry, I couldn't get off mute.
How do you want to say that? Uh, shared, Zolki shared use path between Woods. What did you say, Scott?
Oh, and the currently built Zolki. I only say that because we have some trail on the east side, too, next to City Hall. I just didn't want to get into that, so.
How about the portion of the shared use path along Zolki Lane alignment?
Perfect.
To the west. I have a one more question to satisfy the Matt's concern about the consistency between our plans and the comp plan would be comfortable, it's adding a statement about the trails in the Parks Master Plan. Why they're different from the transportation system plan and what the intent there is. Not not related to Zolki, but related to the others.
Yeah.
Fully a separate item, or no, no, it's not, I'm sorry, go ahead. Kim, can you incorporate that and Scott, can you agree to it?
Yes.
I need to understand what that is. Let me read what I have so far.
Okay, and to and to update the T S P with a note that, no, can we do the T S P?
No, this is, this will be a note in the Parks Master Plan. So you're you're motioning about adopting the Parks Master Plan.
To add a note?
Add a add a note that we will, that we will in the Parks Master Plan, we will say that the the trails do not concur with the T S P. And if anything, want to add past that, Janelle, do you think, or?
No.
Plan should recommend that they be modified in the T S P. That's probably all you need.
Okay, great.
Okay, say, Matt, go for that. Add a note in the Parks Master Plan that
that the T S P or that the Parks Master Plan recommends that the T S P be modified to reflect the trails in the Parks Master Plan. And I think that when that gets written up, the author of the Parks Master Plan can just call a spade a spade. And he can say at the city council hearing, city council expressed concerns with this. And they wanted us to revise this analysis to state the following, and he'll just revise the text to reflect what you're saying tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, should be very straightforward.
Okay, what I want to do now is open it up for public comment, something I failed to do over the fire station motion. So if there is, I believe there's one, maybe two people on with computer. If you would like to speak, please hit the raise hand button in the lower left. In the meanwhile, if you are on telephone only, would like to comment, go ahead and please call in. So far, I don't see anything while I'm waiting. Does staff or does council have any more comments?
I I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. If we if we move forward with the easement of the T S P showing the road as indicated and the road, and it's decided later down the road that later that road is not going to be put in, we have the right of way still that we could then adjust and change that to a trail. Is that correct, Janelle?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of that.
I just want to make sure that it, once we, if we're just going down the, like we were saying, the road, if we decide not to put the road in, do we still have, can we still go back and put a trail in then? Even though it doesn't say that technically, it says we're going to put a road in.
So just because you don't show something in the P S P or the Parks Master Plan, doesn't mean you can't build something there in the future, especially if you own the, have the right of way for it, so.
Because we're going to have the right of way, okay. I just wanted to make sure, I didn't, I don't think I heard that from you and I just wanted to make sure about that.
Yeah, I mean, these these documents are used to require developers to do to do things, but they are a guidance document for the city. And so it doesn't, it doesn't lock you into anything. The the projects that are in here do go into, the cost estimates go into developing the S T Cs. So there has to be some commitment to projects that are there, but you're not locked into building them on any certain schedule and you're not prevented from doing something different down the road if that's what you think is the right thing to do.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to read the motion back one more time before you guys vote.
Thank you.
I ask a question first, please, Kim. So Scott McPhee, when you said with the subtraction of taking out the Zolki Lane portion, you mean anything to do with the Zolki Lane, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean to get get rid of the.
Shared use path.
That's your, your, your caption. So could we amend that just to make it less wordy, more understanding? It says, you've written, I think the motion says with the subtraction of taking out, how about if we just say by eliminating the Zolki Lane portion? Are you okay with that?
Yes, I would say by eliminating the Zolki Lane portion of the trail.
Yeah, and then it's a good one.
Yeah.
So, Kim, yeah, I think that So, so, Kim, yeah, I think that, you see where it says with the subtraction of taking out?
Yeah.
I would just strike that, and I would say by eliminating.
By eliminating the portion.
And then just continue on, yes, just put in the words by eliminating in place of the.
Got it.
Subtraction taking out.
Well, I think I got it. We'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find out.
Okay.
Go ahead and read it when you're ready, Kim.
All right, I'll read it slowly, so write down notes if I missed anything. Motion to adopt the Parks Master Plan as written, resolution 2020-04, and eliminating the portion of the shared use path along the Zolki Lane Alignment, and to add a note in the Parks Master Plan that recommends that the TSP be modified to reflect the trails in the Park Master Plan.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds great.
Oh, okay.
Perfect, thank you. And thank Matt for bringing that up, too, with the, with the, with the note, so.
You okay with that, Janelle?
Yes, I think that's great.
Does that get you what you need, Janelle? Okay.
Do I, can I get a, can I get a second to that motion?
I second that motion.
Thanks, John. Give you a motion in a second, which Kim just read, I'm not going to try to repeat it. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. You done it, thank you very much, okay. Nice job, I think. I don't know if I have public out there or not, I thought I did, I'm not sure. So one final chance for closing public comment. Yeah, we'll take a few seconds here to either raise your hand or call in.
And I have unmuted everyone, so everyone should have their own control to unmute themselves now.
Do you know how many there are, Janelle? You're on, but I.
I believe there's one member of the public left who might be interested in commenting.
All right, so we're going to move on. Any closing comments from council? Or staff? Once we adjourn this meeting, we need to sign off and come back in on the other meeting of invitation given to you by Kim a couple days ago for the executive session. Everybody up to speed on that one? You have a separate request to come back in for that meeting.
And please make sure you join through the calendar invite. I think it's, it's actually for nine o'clock, that you can join it as soon as we end this call, it will be available to join.
So where do I get that from?
You received it from me, should be in your calendar, or.
You don't get, you don't have access to my calendar.
It's an email sent on Monday, at like 10:30, 10:32, Monday.
And I can resend it to you if you would like, right now, but I don't, I, I just want to verify that the link in the email that was sent out is actually correct.
I have an email from you, the, that's my, that's my contact, is the email you sent us on the 13th.
Okay. If there was another one from Kim about the executive session, I would just use the one I sent.
No, Kim did not send one.
Send the one.
Okay.
You want us to go now?
Could we take five minutes, mayor?
Sure.
It's, it's, was posted everywhere about the executive session.
Right. So if we are finished, I'm going to call the meeting adjourned, and we'll come back on within the next five minutes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks. I don't know what happened with the.